The Planning Board, today is Tuesday, March 23rd. I appreciate everyone who was joining us at 7:30 and then saw the memo that we are re-returning at 8:15 to allow the Planning Board the opportunity to participate in the vigil this evening that was occurring behind the library in support of all of our community members that have experienced some hate crimes towards them and also to support them as we go through this. So it is 8:20 PM and I would like to call the meeting to order. With me today is Brian Zakelli, he is the Town Planner along with my fellow members of the Planning Board. We have Diab Jurius, who is the Vice Chair, along with the Secretary according to the state law. We have Heather Hannan, Maureen Meister, and Cheryl Wolf. Thank you for joining me. Also, I believe also is Brian Manter from the Engineering Department. And WinCam is recording us, so if you do choose to speak, just so you know, WinCam is recording us and you can find them at wincam.org or they also are broadcasting us typically live and they also offer recordings thereafter. So thank you for joining us and helping us out WinCam as well. Today, to start off our agenda, we're going to do some changes because of the change in the schedule. We are going to do some really quick updates and then move to the public hearing, which is in regards to the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws that we will be presenting to Town Meeting for their consideration. And then I'm going to remove the subdivision rules and regulations discussion with legal counsel and we will postpone that to another date. We will go through our outstanding meeting minutes and thereafter we'll be going to executive session. To kick it off, I would like to go through some just quick updates for the Planning Board. One of them is actually regarding parking in the Center Business District. It was brought to my attention, and I don't know, Brian, I haven't had a chance to speak to you about it, that there is consideration and some ideas being thrown around about ways to get some temporary parking spaces downtown during the construction of the train station, which is now slated, I believe, to not open until the fall of 2024. And I believe that was announced last night at the Select Board's meeting. And with that, there's also the Waterfield Lot will be closed down for construction and there's some bridge work, some railing work. So there's going to be a tremendous amount of impact in the Center Business District in regards to a loss of parking and how that's going to impact not only the businesses but the vibrancy of the downtown. One of the ideas that was brought to my attention that I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the Planning Board that's being considered is the lot that is next to Town Hall that we had, that's currently, the owners are looking, the design team, is looking at a project there, which we have seen in pre-design application meetings, is potentially a consideration for a temporary parking. And I'm not sure how that would go, but on that lot where the grass is for right now to add additional parking opportunities during the construction. So I wanted to bring that to the Planning Board's attention because I believe that would be coming through our board. And with that as well, capital planning, which I will be having most likely my last meeting on tomorrow, is bringing forward along with the Select Board and the School Committee if passed through the operating an opera, a capital override to the ballot, which is next Tuesday. If that passes through the vote of the public, that will be being brought to Town Meeting and that will deal with the final project left for the flood mitigation work that the town's been doing for, I believe, 10 years. And some repairs to Morocco to sustain it for 10 years itself until hopefully it can be put into the line with the state to support funding. But that's one of the major initiatives that are coming before. But also with that is also some funding to support the rearrangement of the intersection of Waterfield and Church over by where Studio on the Common is. The Select Board has made that a priority to redo that sidewalk. And I had asked Engineering to look into that because the way that they're tightening that intersection up there is going to be some issues with biking coming through there. So just want to make sure everyone knows about that. And I haven't heard a response, but Engineering said they're going to keep a close eye on it because they recognize there are some issues as well with the bikers and ability, alternative mobile mobility through that intersection as it's being redesigned. So they'll be keeping an eye on that, but I know, Brian, you're watching that as well. So those are the updates that I currently have. Other members of the board?
I just, it's Maureen. Hi. I have a follow-up question. Maybe it's directed more to Brian, but you did mention the Waterfield Lot. What's the, where do things stand with the project for construction there?
Sure, so we actually have a meeting either in the middle of this week talking about the land development agreement. So the town has been negotiating, the lawyers have been negotiating this land development agreement that would go up in front of Town Meeting. There's been a lot of talk and we have a meeting, like I said, it's either Wednesday or Thursday and I'll have more information after that, but it's getting down to nitty-gritty in terms of lease payments and that type of thing over the course of the 99-year lease. So continuing, continuing that conversation at the attorney level.
But it looks like it's moving forward. Does it?
Yes, it does.
Oh, good. Yeah, so, and then Washington at Swanton? Any news on that?
Yeah, unfortunately, no. Unfortunately, we're in this kind of weird holding pattern where the, you know, we're not really involved at the moment because the current owner is trying apparently to, you know, make a, make a sale. And it's unclear how much the town is going to be involved or not with that. It potentially could change hands to another private landowner where, and we're still obviously wanting to do a friendly 40B there. I think that's, that's clear, but in terms of where we are in that, it's kind of very, it's very unclear, unfortunately. Same, same update as, as last week.
So there had been some, I guess, objective or goal of trying to bring it to the Town Meeting? Do I remember that correctly? If there were a potential, possible, no, how did that work? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So as of, yeah, sure.
Not the, the short version. I'm sorry. I don't want to derail the.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. The short version is that the last Town Meeting gave the authority for the Select Board to take the property. That, that's what happened at the last Town Meeting. We, you know, at the moment, we're not, we're not taking anything. And it's possible we will never have to take it. But, so as of right now, the town is not involved with the taking or sale of that property. But we're involved in the conversation basically saying whoever does buy that, the town would like to work with them in order to do a development there that makes, makes sense for the neighborhood and for the town.
And then finally, any further, anything scheduled that people would want to know about for the North Main Street study?
No, actually, I reached out to Josh today for a check-in meeting. We haven't checked in since that last one. I was about two weeks ago where he was, told me where he was in terms of the analysis, but I don't, we don't have that community meeting set yet. I believe it's going to be in the first several weeks of April, so less than, maybe something like three to four weeks from now. So I'm trying to connect with him. We're setting up a time this week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other updates from members of the board? All right, so I'm going to move to the Winchester Planning Board's public hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, to discuss the proposed amendments to the town's zoning bylaws. So going through our hearing procedures for Town Meeting articles, it looks like we have only a few participants with us outside of our board and staff. So I would, I'm going to welcome those few members to the public hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. Just so all of you know who are joining us by signing into Zoom with your name, you are, that is how you are officially signing in for the record of the Planning Board. I'm going to have to repeat, which I always do when we have a hearing, that this meeting is being recorded for the benefit of those who are coming for the hearing and/or who are unable to be here and it will be available through WinCam's website along with its being broadcasted now. I just introduced everyone, but I will do it one more time. I'm Heather Von Mering, I'm Chair of the Planning Board and along with me is the Town Planner, Brian Zakelli, and my other members of the Planning Board, Diab Jurius, the Vice Chair, Maureen Meister, Cheryl Wolf, and Heather Hannan. The hearing is called to inform the public about potential changes to the Winchester zoning bylaw or the upcoming Town Meeting. I am not going to read the full legal notice, it's, but if you have any questions, it is readily available and the Town Planner can provide it to you. So if you would like to ask a question during this process or would like to be called upon, please state your name and your company if applicable and the address that you reside at for the record. Please direct your comments and the questions to me as the Chair. And if we were in person, I would welcome you to sit at the table with us if you're going to ask questions. However, since we don't have a table to sit at with Zoom, I will give you an opportunity, you can raise your hand or if you're on a phone and don't have the ability to raise your hand, you can unmute yourself and say that you would like to be recognized. I have the right to exclude irrelevant material repetitive comments and I ask that decorum be used and if there's unruly persons, I can ask them to be removed. Brian, I was wondering, are you ready to present on behalf of the Planning Board?
Sure, I just have a few slides explaining what we're doing.
All right, and just so everyone knows, the presentation for us as well as the drive run for Town Meeting, the presentation is a maximum of five minutes with a potential extension for five, 10 minutes total to explain the warrant article. So the Planning Board also uses this moment as well for a learning and for clarity and to help the public as well get better understanding of what we're saying and to make sure that we are using language and talking about the issues that we are addressing in a way that is receivable for all of the public. So if you have any comments on that, we welcome that as well. So Brian, I'm going to let you take it away.
Sure, thanks a lot, Heather. So Spring Town Meeting of 2021, we just have one article for this Spring Town Meeting that's related to zoning. Our other article is simply a Planning Board report. The objective of our articles related to the driveway curb cuts in Section 5.1.10 and it's simply to clarify the existing driveway curb cut bylaw. So in 2017, a maximum driveway width was established at the property line for single and two-family homes, it was 20 feet, and there are a couple other provisions. But no guidance or restrictions were put on how large that curb radius should be. I'm going to show you what I'm talking about in the next slide. Because there were no restrictions or guidance on that curb radii, it left Engineering Department, Building Department, and DPW without really a way to manage the actual cutting of the curb at the street or at the curb line. And I'll show you what, what I mean. So emboldened is the new language and the strike-through is the deleted language. So we're just trying to get more consistent with changing the street line to the property line and then saying not just that it's the maximum driveway curb cut is 20 feet at the property line, but it's also 20 feet at the edge of the, at the edge of the pavement. So that, all we're doing is, we had said that this 20 feet was going to be just at the apron and now we're just trying to clarify that it's actually also at the street line. So that's what this is doing for each of these provisions, so it's 20 and 20, 10 and 10. And I'll show you what this means in the next, and this is for duplexes and triplexes. It's the same exact language as the single, as the single families. So just to get in kind of quick, quickly into it. So this is the graphic that was produced with help from the Engineering Department. So thank you, Brian Manter, for this. And so this was based upon a couple of revisions of the Planning Board recently to, to show a maximum curb radius of, of three feet. So we're just keeping the 20 feet all the way to the curb line and then just saying that there should be a, a maximum curb radius here because there was no restriction previously that this distance here that I'm pointing to, basically there was, there was nothing governing it. So we were finding curb cuts that were actually cutting the curb much, much more than 20 feet, whereas this is maybe more like 20 to 24 feet total. We were seeing ones that even though there were 20 feet at the, at the driveway apron here, because of this curb, we were finding that they were actually closer to 30 and 35 feet. So we're just clarifying this for both streets with curbing as well as for streets with, oh, as well as for streets without curbing. It's obviously a lot easier for driveway curb cuts without curbing, it's just 20 feet right to the edge of the pavement. So what we're kind of talking about here, these, these kind of curved areas here in order to swing into the driveway. And like I said, what we were seeing is these, some of these curved areas ended up cutting in, starting here and ended up cutting in all the way here, so the actual curb cut was much longer than 20 feet. So this was that due to the request of building DPW and Engineering Department because we were getting requests that were not being governed by the existing bylaw. That is all I have for this article and thank you so much and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Brian. That was well under five minutes. So what, just because we're in a hearing process right now, we're not at Town Meeting, we're going to continue with our hearing process procedures for Town Meeting articles and there will be an opportunity in a short moment for the public to comment. So the next item in our hearing procedures is memos and letters. It is my understanding that the Planning Board to date has not received any memos or letters from any of other board, summarizing their concerns or issues they may have. I wanted, moving on to item number six, comments from Town Staff and other boards. I know that Engineering Department is here as well. They actually helped guide the Planning Board in this process to bring the clarity to, for the recommendation to the, to Town Meeting. So I didn't know, Brian, did you have any comments that you wanted to add at this point regarding the proposal? And that's Brian from Town Engineering, there we have a Brian for Town Planning, but the Planning Department also Brian from Engineering.
Hey Heather, this is Brian with Engineering. The Engineering Department has no further comment on the presentation that Brian's Kelly just made.
Thank you, Brian Manter. So now we're going to move to number seven, which is opening of the public comment. So I would like to ask how many people would like to speak? And both questions and comments are welcome. So if you'd like to speak at this time, if you could please raise your hand or if you could unmute yourself would be wonderful. So I am going to, first of all, I see a member of my board has her hand raised. Diab, do you, did you have a question real quick?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out that I think we need to change on Section 5.110 at the very end. The date still says 2017. And I think we need to update the date.
So we had a conversation, we can, we'll discuss this in a minute, but yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
We, we discussed this with legal. Okay. So first on my list is Chris Nixon and then we have Sally Dale. And, but I'm going to just real quick before I go, I'm going to give everyone about a minute to unmute yourself and let me know if you wanted to speak, if you are a, well, actually, you know what? We'll go right through it because I think we're all right. So Chris, go ahead.
You hear me okay, Heather?
Yes, I can. Can you state your name and address?
Chris Nixon, 130 Forest Street. May I, I can try to see if this works. May I share screen? I have a Planning Board document. I have a Planning Board document that I wanted to throw up with some of my remarks.
Sure, hold on a second, I will make you a co-host.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, let me try this. This will talk, okay, here we go. So this is a blast from the past, if everybody can see this. First of all, I want to say good evening and I'm glad I had the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I actually missed this opportunity four years ago and I was kicking myself for it. Brian Zakelli will remember when the Planning Board made its presentation at Springtown Meeting for Article Six. I was sending some emails looking for some additional information. And from this presentation, in fact, the Planning Board did produce some additional detail before town meeting took action, which was really helpful. So these kind of cartoons that you're seeing here were actually updated with a little more information, although the language did not change. So the, the, a concern that I had in 2017 that I still have today that I wanted to share with you, and I'm saying this as someone who did put in a second curb cut for a circular drive. And this, I'm grandfathered because I did it long before Article Six was voted. I had a concern about the restriction to 10 feet for those properties that seek more than one curb cut. And that, and I believe that even would apply, for instance, to like a corner lot or in this case, a duplex. And my concern at the time was that 10 feet on some of our roads, depending on the vehicle, might actually require the operator to swing wide and to cross the double yellow line when there actually is a double yellow, but basically to cross the center line of the road. And what, what I wish I had been sort of more on the ball back in 2017 was to ask the Planning Board if it would consider as an alternative to a slight change in language, perhaps something that mimics Boston. And I will stop just for a moment so I can pull that image up. The city of Boston has a very similar diagram to what you all are presenting. But they allow a range, and so I would ask you to just call your attention to the upper left-hand corner, this area here. 10 foot is a minimum and 12 foot is a max. And the, the, sort of a couple of reasons why I'm thinking of this. If I go to Google Maps real quick, there is a property that put in a curb cut. I believe after we voted this in 2017, I don't know this homeowner, the intersection of Park and Highland. You can see, this is what I call up here, kind of the legacy curb cut off of Park Avenue, very wide. It's 15 to 16 feet. And this is the newer curb cut, much narrower. I would just share with the Planning Board, I see vehicles pull in and out of this, particularly pulling in. They, they have to swing wide to get into that driveway. And certainly Highland is a very wide street in Winchester. There are others that are much more narrow. And as Ms. Von Mering is well aware, since we sit together at the Capitol Table, we have some traffic improvement plans coming on Highland that include the installation of some islands for traffic calming measures. Not sure exactly where those are going to go or if that's been figured out yet. But we understand the goal behind the islands and Capitol supports those. But if we have islands in the road, then you know, that may sort of further restrict a vehicle swinging wide. So for me, it, it has long just been an issue of not just convenience, but, but safety, given how narrow 10 feet is. And so I wanted to respectfully ask the Planning Board, as you kind of consider this language that you bring to town meeting, consider a change instead of 10-foot minimum, excuse me, 10-foot minimum or set it at 10 feet. Call that a minimum and maybe consider a maximum of 12. So that, you know, whether architects or civil engineers or homeowners can have a little more leeway when they're making a decision of what they need. I, I think this might actually be part of the issue that Brian Zakelli was just speaking to in terms of why would the radii at the street be so wide? I think, Brian, you mentioned in some cases 30 feet. That, that may in part just be a reflection of the fact that folks are looking for a way to better negotiate a turn into the driveway, given that ultimately we're cutting the throat down to 10 feet. So I hope that's clear. Appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. Thank you.
Heather, can I, thank you, Chris. Heather, can I respond super quick?
Yeah, you can respond.
And by the way, Heather, you should share your screen again, or whatever. So I'm, I'm done, but somebody needs to throw your screen back up from your presentation.
Sure.
Right, Brian's master screenshare.
Okay, so the only thing I was going to mention is that although these are maximums, there is a provision that allows for, for you to apply for a special permit to go to. There actually is no, there actually is no maximum. It specifically says you can go to a special permit to, to, and, and a, a street like Highland. I think you could easily make that case that, you know, this doesn't make sense and, and this is why. But there are certainly, I mean, 10 feet to turn in. I can understand some vehicles are not going to do that, but, but most people do kind of go over that side, but you can't do that on Highland. So I, I just think there is a provision and I, and I hear you.
Thank you.
I think it's also interesting to note that it, what, what the, it's not the 20 feet. It's actually the 10 feet. So it's when you have the two entrances on one site, which is a very good point on the property he sampled. But what he's referencing is when there is two entrances or it's a duplex or a triplex and they're driveways. And that is a good point. So well, the board will discuss it, but I want to go to, by the way, members of the board, I just want to remind you that in hearings of this, that you are welcome to respond or pose questions to the speaker as well. So if any members of the board right now would like to ask Mr. Nixon any questions, you're welcome to.
Heather, can I just thank you for a moment too for clarifying? So I, I do want to be clear, I have no issue with the 20-foot. It, it's just more about, if you take the 20 and you say you have two curb cuts, so you just split it in half. And although typically 10 plus 10 equals 20, in this instance, I, I just question if 10 is really enough for those properties for which there are those, the two curb cuts or whether it's a new build or if it's going to be an added curb cut. I have some safety concerns, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yep, and it sounds like no board members have a question right now. Sally Dell, your hand is raised.
The, the only, the only question I had was with regards to Brian Minter's excellent diagram, whether you want to also have it indicate that there's a 10-foot minimum. I mean, I don't know that anybody would make a driveway narrower than 10 feet because most cars today have trouble with that. But just in terms of this being sort of a comprehensive graphical representation of what the language says in paragraphs one through five. And I also really liked the, the cartoons that Chris had shared just now that, that showed the range of arrangements that driveways take in town. I thought it was very helpful. And it puts into a graphical form the restrictions with regards to two entrances, whether it's a U or whether it's a duplex. It was just very elucidating, and I just know from being a town meeting member and not always having a lot of the background, the why and then the clear explanation is really, really important for town meeting. Because backstory is often lost. That was my comment.
Thank you, Sally. Members of the board, did you have any questions or comments for Sally? I should say Ms. Dell. I want to call Chris and you both by your first names, my apologies. I prefer to use first names. All right, so Chris, your hand's still raised. Did you have another comment?
I just put it up because I, I do have a tech, I have a question for, for Brian. And I don't know how, I don't know if there's a word for this among civil engineers. I think he's, maybe members of the Planning Board will know what I'm describing. The, the radiused pieces that are in the diagram you all are looking at tonight, which are, which we see everywhere are becoming, yes, thank you. Those are actually coming into hard, a scarcer and scarcer supply. Took me three weeks to get the two that I needed. Members may be familiar that along Pond Street near Route Three at the Townhouse Development, this is not what was installed. Instead, the developer basically took short straight sections of granite, three or four-foot sections, and just sloped them down to the driveway. So there is no radius. And then what you create then is this kind of triangular piece of real estate that just gets paved. This was also used significantly when Washington was repaved many years ago. So my understanding is that a lot of contractors favor that method because it's cheaper material. They're just buying the stock of, of, it's six-inch granite curbs or eight-inch granite curb, and they're splitting it. And so they're sort of sinking it into where the opening is for the driveway. Again, the consequence is more impermeable surfaces, so I personally don't like it. But we see more and more of that in Winchester. So I was curious if maybe Brian Zakelli is familiar with what I'm talking about, maybe knows actually what it's called, or folks in the Engineering Department. But then based on what the Planning Board is proposing with respect to the transition itself, does this suggest that the only way to do this is to basically procure and install the radius piece of granite? And, and therefore, we're not going to see any more of the the, the cutting, well, forgive the pun, cutting of a corner by some contractors?
I don't think we could, I don't think we could say it has to be rounded. That seems way too prescriptive. I do know what you're talking about. I don't know what it's called, Brian Minter. I don't know if you could weigh, weigh in, but essentially, yeah, they're basically burying it so it's at a slope going down, going, yeah, so I've, I've seen it, and then the triangle looks like this. So I, I still think that from, even though what, this is a maximum three-foot radius, there's still a distance from here to here. So maybe that's what, maybe that's what has to be a maximum. So it's a, it could say granite curb corner or straight piece, you know, some, something like that, that we can cover that. So I fully agree with you that it's this, we would still come into problem if we didn't have this curb, curb corner.
Mr. Nixon, this is Brian Minter with the Engineering Department. Unfortunately, I'm having a hard time envisioning what you're trying to describe. But I am very familiar with contractors trying to cut corners. So, so I can appreciate your observation and concern with that. And I can also appreciate your concern about trying to find granite curbing as that's more expensive and becoming more and more rare. And just speaking out loud on this, perhaps that we wouldn't, like Brian Zakelli was saying, we wouldn't specify that it's a granite current corner, or we could say granite slash precast concrete. I believe that you can get concrete versions of the same thing, which would not be as attractive, but would still instill the same concept of the three-foot radius.
Deavide, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I think I think Brian, Brian with an I, Brian Zakelli, you kind of put your finger on it is that we need to define where the curb, where those edges are, where the ends of that piece of, of, right now, that piece of granite are and label those. So if they want to take a straight piece, they have to, they can't end any further back than where that curved piece is. And they also can't begin any further than where that straight, than where it is where it begins on the driveway apron. Does that make any sense?
It's three, no, it's got to be three feet because the radius, although I don't know the actual exact dimensions of those granite curbs, it's a three-foot radius. So it's three feet from the 20.
Well, it's
But it's not the whole, it's not a whole quarter of a circle.
Yeah, it's a fraction of a circle. So the key thing is that you need to you can, you can, we need to set a maximum arc essentially that what we would want there. So and I can't do the math in my head right now because as Heather just pointed out, it's not a, we haven't defined what the, what the actual angular distance along that arc is.
Heather, I did find the, a very detailed photo of exactly what we have on Pond Street. If I could share it and then you all can see what I'm talking about.
Yep, you can share it. I think my thought is just to strike the word granite.
So this is a great example of what happened along Pond Street. I hope you all can see this. So you'll notice there's no radius curbs anywhere for these driveways. Instead, they took straight sections and sort of plunged them into the ground. In, on streetscapes, and in this instance on Pond Street, of course, the sidewalk, we have poured concrete right up to the curb of the street. But in many other instances in Winchester, you actually have kind of a, a grassy median. And to Brian Zakelli's point, when you use this method, you now have this kind of odd-shaped bit of real estate. And because it's at a slope, I gather, you know, it washes out, grass doesn't grow. So this approach in fact leads to more impermeable surface. It leads to just more concrete, which is in my mind not ideal. But I just wanted you all to be, to be aware that this method of installation is now becoming more and more common because it's quicker and faster and cheaper for contractors. I personally don't like it. That's not what I did on my property. But I would, I, I would just ask the Planning Board to sort of look at this and think about what is the Planning Board's disposition towards this? What is, you know, staff's disposition towards that? And whether what you're presenting to town meeting is something that should and could address it?
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. I, I don't know if there's a accessibility issue in terms of creating, they've essentially whittled away at the sidewalk and turned it into a less safe area.
Sorry, I'm throwing a lot on your plate tonight, but this is a good opportunity for me to do so.
Well, I, I wonder if this isn't something where we can work on this gradually? I mean, we have an, we have an existing issue with too wide of entrances onto streets. And as you've pointed out, Chris, there are many different ways of, of slicing this loaf. So maybe we just, maybe we just whittle away at it over time. I, I, it depends on whether we think this is something important enough that we have to do now just to cure one problem that we've seen?
And I think there's a way to determine this distance from, from this line to this line. And we would say, we'd scrap, scrap the word granite and say curb corner or whatever, you know, linear distance maximum three-foot radius or, and then it would be some type of linear distance from, from here to here. And that would, that would be that. I think that would do it. I think whatever this three-foot radius, whatever this distance is based upon this three-foot radius, that should be the, the number that goes there. That would be my recommendation.
But Brian, if Heather if Heather's reading it that it's a, a full 90 degrees, then other people might too and think they have three feet to play with. But I've been looking at those in there, it's more like a I don't know, it's not that wide. It's like a foot and a half or something.
I think it's actually four, I think it's, I think increases it almost to 25. I think it's actually, Brian Minter, you might want to, I think it was, was it two and a half and two and a half? So it made this 20 feet actually go to 25, I think it was around 25 with these three-foot radiuses.
I don't think they're that wide. The ones around here aren't.
Not to, so the, I, yeah, I don't know why I remember that this was potentially two or two and a half on each side. So it increased it from, to like 24 or 25 feet. But we can get that distance. I think that's, that makes, you know, can figure that out.
This, can I just make an observation? I think, I, this is Cheryl Wolf. I think that if you were to use what Mr. Nixon showed in the photograph just a moment ago as a, and you had grass rather than sidewalk on each side, you would probably have to, you'd, you would drive over the edge, over the, the granite that's declining as you come in. And so I would say this could still work. You get, you get a radius at three feet and you get to widen for, in that case. But if you're not using the radius, then you need to meet that 20-foot max opening where the granite hits the driveway. If you're just doing the declining granite. If you're just doing the declining granite.
Which is like seven.
Because otherwise, you know, you've got nowhere to stop your grass up against your driveway. Or you make um, a driveway apron that That could get, could end up looking more V shaped instead of having this nice clean Uh, relationship to the street. So I I, you know, I don't, I like the curb Curve radius, but you know, if those are, and I can imagine how they're hard to get, they're, they have to be made Very carefully. So I think that, I think that if they're gonna They're gonna do the declining Granite, then just point out that it has to, it has to stop at the maximum width of the opening. Because part of that, that decline is just gonna got, you you could easily Hit that with a tire in your car, right? It's kind of a, it's it's sloped in a way that eases The turn. So I don't, I think we just You get, you get the flare if you use a radius and if you don't use the radius, you have to meet the twenty foot max.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to do anything about that. Sorry, go Heather.
Yeah, go, if go to slide number seven, Brian. So it falls under here, edge of pavement. You say edge of pavement or curving?
Exactly, you could say curb.
Well, this, well, this says for streets without curbing.
So can we, I'm I'm a little, I personally don't like the The way that curve, the declining, if we're gonna use that term, curbing looks on that last picture we saw. And I don't know why we simply can't say replace that curved piece with a straight piece Which comes out and just essentially connects the, connects the two points. Or instead of having a curved piece, have a straight piece right there. No, no, not like that. Connect the, where the, where the curved piece starts on the driveway apron. And then draw a line directly to where the curve.
I'm sorry, a straight chamfer, I think.
Yeah, it's a cord. It's a cord on a circle and not not up that way, that way, yes, just that way. I mean, that's, you know, I am currently in a, you know, post World War Two suburb outside of Detroit and they don't have granite anywhere. And they just have straight lines. They're actually a little gently, you know, but those are straight rather than any sort of fancy curving. And then we don't have to worry about those bizarre declining things, which I think are just dangerous.
It's Maureen, I agree with Dab. I don't like the, I guess New new phrasing here, declining, the declining curbing uh, that dies into the ground. That was horrible looking. And uh, Dab's idea I think would work. So I don't think we want to encourage precast concrete. I've seen lots of that curbing in cities. They use it typically with steel that's not, it's it's just rusty. It's pretty hideous. So um, and if you don't have the steel here, this, these are the points that get hit. So that's where, I mean, the concrete just wouldn't last.
Yeah, the other thing that I want to make note of, because I'm actually going through it on my own, is that The street is being repaved and uh, our home and our next door neighbor's home does not have granite curbing. And so the town is like, well, you can do an asphalt berm in place of granite curbing because we can't get granite curbing Right now. So the, I think that granite Portion should be stricken, that is curb corner, maximum three feet. And then I agree with Dab, and then if there is no curbing, it's it's goes back to slide number seven.
I I think everything is great, except as Heather Hannon pointed out, we're not, if we, if we're allowing a full quarter Circle, then we are adding an extra six feet To the width.
No, we don't want to do that.
So so I think we need to, let's, you know, let's say we want a twenty two foot wide maximum At the roadway. Do we want a twenty three foot and then you split it one and a half feet on either side?
Well, I still think it, it, it still matters if 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 we're okay with this three foot radius. I I think it makes sense to figure out what this distance is.
But we can't, Brian, unless we actually specify What fraction of a circle that radius is on.
Well, can't Brian measure one of them? The other Brian? What the degrees are.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you can find one and you go out and measure it. Yeah, I mean, if it looks good, then yeah. I imagine they're like maybe thirty degrees. Maximum maybe forty five degrees.
Chris, did you search it and find it, the dimension?
No, I, no, I, I literally have a tape measure five minute, five feet from me and I could just go out in my yard and measure the ones I put in and just let you know. Uh, I'm literally will go do that. I just wanted to offer the Boston, city of Boston diagram that I threw up briefly that's very similar to this. They actually call out two foot radius for that granite transition and they are available. Uh, and and whoever said it earlier, yes, the issue is they have to be manufactured. They have to be cut. So that's why they're expensive. But you can get them in two and three foot radii if 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 Dab's concern is trying to minimize that overall width. So if you wanted to change it from three to two, you obviously pick up a foot on either side. I will happily just go measure what I put in the ground and come right back and I'll 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 type it in the chat or something.
Excellent.
I'll go on a, I'll go on a little field trip to Forest Street and I'll be right back.
Just get us that cord length, Chris.
When you say cord length, yeah, tell me exactly what you're looking for, Dab.
That, what Brian is drawing right now.
Like point, yeah, from out, so outside corner to outside corner, right?
Yeah, assuming you've got a three foot radius curb. Then that's the distance we need.
I will be right back.
With that, Brian, um, uh, it was recommended that you add the graphic or a similar graphic that we used back in two thousand seventeen Of the house placement with the driveways. It was pretty geometrical.
Yeah, I I I think that uh, not many people actually enjoyed those graphics.
No, but we can make, we can just do, we can actually do an aerial and just overlay this actually if we want.
But just to clarify, why were we asking for the cord length? Don't we want the width at the driveway? So
I think we want to know what's the size of the standard Curve corner is.
Curve corner is, yeah.
But don't we want to know the width too?
We still want to know this distance, right?
Right.
Well, that
With math, we can actually figure it out if you give us.
We can figure it, if we, if it's a three foot wide. If it's a three foot radius and we know the cord length, we can determine what that length is. And you know, maybe, maybe Chris is not put in symmetrically, right? Maybe he's got it rotated a bit so that his curb, piece of curb starts further up the driveway apron. And so he doesn't have as wide of a width. Or maybe it's all the way down as far as possible to the street. And there are a couple of things that I I think we don't know what his layout is because you can slide that Thing around a bit. Um, I do, while Chris is out there, I do want to bring us to looking at the word curb line. And there was some confusion about it last time we spoke. And I've been trying to find definitions of what curb line is. And the ones all I find are essentially, uh, it's the line at the face of the curb nearest to the street or roadway. So it's actually what we're calling the gutter line is also being called the curb line. But the way this, but we're we're calling the curb line Is the perpendicular to the gutter line where the curb hits the driveway apron. So I don't think we can use the word curb line here. I think what we need to do is to take that twenty foot max opening dimension and slide it down. So those two, the horizontal arrows intersect the, where the, yeah, exactly where you're pointing. And just remove the word curb line. Because otherwise it'll, it's it's confusing.
We even have the word gutter line here at all?
Gutter line there, or you change that to curb and you're all done. That's the curb line right there.
The gutter line is the curb line, but when you're doing a measure, the dimension that says twenty foot max opening at the curb line Is not drawn from the curb line. It's drawn as the width of the driveway apron. Because we're saying that you can actually, if if we call the gutter line the curb line, which I believe it truly is. Then we're saying you can actually have a twenty two or a twenty three foot wide opening at the curb line if you put in the round corners.
Okay, so I think you just strike the word gutter line then.
You strike the word curb line.
So hold, hold on a sec.
Got it, yes.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, this is the, this is We're talk, right now, these are the words that we're using. We're using curb line Or edge of pavement, saying it's twenty feet at the curb line or edge of pavement. So then we're saying that still twenty feet at the curb, that from this distance to this distance still is twenty feet.
But that's not the curb line.
No, we're talking about the out of the street, Brian. The wider number.
You can't claim it's a twenty foot max opening at the curb line if you're also allowing Extras, you're 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 allowing the curb, the the, this radius expansion of the apron until it hits the curb line.
Yes, uh, so I think what you're saying, Dab, is the um, the vertical lines where the um, Where where the twenty max opening is.
Yes.
That those need to be trimmed so they don't extend all the way to the end of the Granite curb radius, but they need to go up to the dashed, what we call the gutter line. And we need to be consistent with our terminology here between curb line and gutter line. Is that?
Well, the curb line is essentially the gutter line. They are the same as far as I can tell from definitions. So if you're gonna say twenty foot max opening at the curb line, Then that means that the Curb corner flares That where they meet that, that is twenty feet from there to Right? So that's the actual curb line. And that can't, then if we're saying that's maximum of twenty feet, then we have to make, shrink everything. So There's a We can't say twenty foot max opening at the curb line. It just doesn't make sense.
It's really twenty four or whatever it is.
Yes, but we also want to make sure that people, that the driveway, there's this transition. We want to control the transition from the driveway apron to the curb line In order to prevent having essentially You know, widening it all the way out, starting at the right of way. Or starting at the property line.
Why doesn't the, where right now says twenty foot max opening at curb line, why doesn't it just say twenty feet? Because this is a diagram, so then it's understood that it it plus whatever. But you've got at the bottom of this image, you've got twenty foot max opening at property line. So
I agree.
Top, it just says twenty feet. It's good enough. And then go back to the zone, the buy, the amendment that we're talking about.
The language is in there and it's been cleared by legal to be what we're intending it to. So the image, the image is messing everything up and confusing everyone.
Yeah.
Then, I'm sorry, but the language in the thing says twenty foot max at the curb line. Which means that You can't, the the twenty foot max includes the, right from there, Brian, where your cursor is, all the way to the symmetric point on the other. That's the, that's the, that's the distance we're claiming we're going to be mandating.
Right.
Yeah, I actually thought that it was written that way because that's as wide as we wanted it at the street. So if you want to have curves, you have to bring it in. That's how I was reading it. So that your driveway is actually narrower.
Yeah, I, I thought this was going to be, so this was gonna be twenty and then, yeah, the the distance from here to here. The actual curb line was also going to be twenty. I thought that was what we had decided.
That's what I thought it's.
Well, then this is a very misleading diagram because it implies that you can have something wider than twenty feet.
So then those lines need, the vertical lines need to go to the outside of the curves.
But then it wouldn't, it can't be, it can't be outside of those curves if the max is twenty. That was, that was the thing. And there really is another dimension that we are having here is that if this is twenty and we're allowing a curve, Then this is, like I said, twenty four or twenty five.
Either or. If you don't have curves and you have like a straight driveway, then it can be twenty.
Then it is, that's right. Here it's, here it's twenty when there's no curb. And then if there is a curb, we're also saying from here to here, it should be twenty.
Right, that's how I'm reading it.
Then that, okay, but just, that's not what this diagram is.
We can just change, but the what, then all we would need to do is, it doesn't matter about this three foot radius, doesn't matter about Any of these pieces. It's just, you can put whatever you want in there as long as from here to here is twenty. Correct?
No, we, no.
Why not?
I, Chris, what is the dimension you have?
So I I have news here for Dab. And what I would like, what I would like to do is just first call up That Boston diagram that I shared with you in case this is helpful for you all. In Boston, what they're doing is they're saying you have a minimum driveway width and you have a maximum. They're not really dimensioning this, this curb line that Dab was just describing. This width is simply a function of the driveway plus whatever that transition is. So Dab, I went out and measured and believe it or not, I actually put in two foot stones, not three. And I forgot this. I did it to match the ones I already had. I checked three of my neighbors on Forest Street. We're all at two feet. So this, I, the numbers I have for you, Dab, you were asking about this sort of outside corner. I think you called it a cord. So Again, with a two foot stone, which is what Boston says you have to use and what, what we have in great number on Forest Street. Although it's a very wide street, as you know. We, I have thirty three and a half inches from this outside corner to this outside corner. The inside line at the cut, at the back of the stone is twenty five inches. And I, as I said, it's a twenty four inch stone. I would suggest, because if somebody, I mean, Heather, somebody was just making the point, legal has looked at the words. The diagram is just meant to clarify. I would encourage you to maybe consider backing off any dimension from, you know, it it face of curb Or cut of curb to cut of curb and let that opening be whatever it would be, which is a driveway Limit or range, if you should entertain the ten foot to twelve foot suggestion. Plus a transition, plus a transition, then it simply, it is what it is. But those are your numbers.
Yeah, so I understand what he's saying. Brian, can you pull back up the image that we had? Can you take back over control? What he's recommending is strike, so it says twenty foot maximum. And then also says ten foot minimum. Take, strike at curb line, strike at gutter line. You can conclude the driveway apron and then include below twenty foot max opening at property line, ten foot at a twenty, ten foot minimum. Right? That is clearly that you can take the words out. The granite curb corner maximum three feet radius, strike the word granite. So it's just curb corner maximum three foot radius.
So why aren't we doing two feet? Because the ones I'm seeing around my neighborhood are also smaller, I think. I know, but why?
Um, it's what some other towns have is three foot maximum. So it's, uh, I think Brian Menter, it was Andover?
Uh, we saw a lot of communities similar to Winchester. We're using the three foot radius. However, there are other communities that use standardized on the two foot radius and I believe there's other Products out there that have four foot radius, so you know.
It's kind of the happy medium.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is, you know, we're trying to stay away from the six foot radius. So the three foot didn't seem so bad at this point. But I think we can, all the labels and stuff in terms of the gutter line, curb line can all just be struck, like taken out of this diagram, right? And that kind of clarifies What we're talking about. Are we okay with that? Do you need to see it?
I think you should just, you should figure out if Brian understands exactly what changes need to be made to this graphic. So I know you, I know you, I know we we can go through them again, but I want to make sure that everything's clear.
Yeah, I I sketched it. Um, so I'm just gonna go over it real quick. So it says granite curb corner maximum three foot radius. The word granite would be stricken. Taken out. So it's just curb corner maximum three foot radius. Right? So when there's certain instances Right? So when there's certain instances in our town where we're not using granite, we're using, there's asphalt curving, okay? So then where it says 20 foot max opening at curb line, it would say 10 foot minimum, 20 foot max opening. At curb line would be stricken. Gutter line would be deleted. And then where it says 20 foot max opening at property line, it would say 10 foot minimum, 20 foot max opening at property line.
Well, that all sounds great. Do we need to go back to the wording?
Yeah, I don't know if that, yeah.
I didn't think the wording changed. It's just the graphic.
So I don't really want to keep talking about this, but if someone doesn't do granite and they did concrete or something, couldn't they get away with doing a full 90 degree, like quarter circle, three foot huge turn that we wouldn't want to see there?
Yeah, I think they could, because if we're not saying how big, well, if we're just saying the radius is three feet, but we're not saying how much of that radius can be used. It's essentially not defining this.
I think that should just be defined as two feet on either side, and that's it.
We could do that.
And take out the, the maximum, two feet for the radius, whether it's a three foot radius or a two foot.
Well, it's not a radius.
It's not a radius.
Two foot width on either side, and then get away from the radius.
Chris's dimensions give me, uh, an angle of that of about 26 degrees. So if you took a 26 degree chunk out of a circle, that's equivalent to what Chris's cord gives us.
Right, we're not specifying.
Yeah, you just go to two feet.
And then...
For the curving.
So then you will talk about this transition area, with say a max feet of two feet width on each of these transition areas, which would actually be a 24 foot max opening at the curb line.
I mean, I don't think we need a 20, we don't, we, I don't think you need an extra two feet on a 20 foot max, on a 20 foot wide.
It's pretty wide.
I mean, I could see that maybe on a smaller driveway, on a 10 foot, just because, but there's, there's extra room on a 20 footer.
I mean, also, when we see projects coming through, we try to get people to have a very narrow driveway and then flare it up at the garage. Like, when do we really even want to see 20 feet unless the garage is really close to the street?
I think that's actually one issue, Heather, is that there are chunks of town, like where Heather lives and where I live, where you are, you essentially have parking pads, and there is no garage. Like, I don't have a garage. I essentially have a parking pad, so if I were to try to narrow it off of, I would drive into my back deck.
Right.
So, um... But I don't, I mean, for a 20 foot wide thing, I think we can get away with just 20 feet at the street.
I do, too.
Heather, if I'm allowed to just make a, a, an observation, I, I think Heather's comment, Diab, was really good, that this is just trying to illustrate multiple scenarios, right? So this could be 20 foot max or 10 foot minimum. So, the, the various elements of this drawing kind of need to support something as narrow as 10 feet or as wide as 20 feet. So it's not, this isn't necessarily a drawing just for a 20 foot wide driveway, at least as I was understanding Heather's suggestion.
Right.
He's trying to support the language.
So, I mean, what we could simply say is, if we take the drawing for the, where you don't have a curb, and say, "We don't care what you do within that 20 foot max." You can put a curb in if you want, or you don't put a curb in, but this is the only picture we need then.
No, we need a curb. We need, I just say, I, the other option is to say curb corner, maximum two foot radius allowed.
It still doesn't get...
You're gonna do a curb radius, you can do a two foot radius, otherwise, there's nothing else noted. That's allowed.
Yeah, but I can take that two feet, and I could put those two feet essentially parallel to the road, which kind of does away with the fact that I have a curb there, but I could bury the curb, and it'll essentially give me an extra two foot wide. I don't know. No, that doesn't make sense.
All right, well, we don't have to decide today, do we? Brian, in terms of the timeline?
Uh, I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, we're supposed to have final language, um, by the end of the week.
Okay.
At least, at least what, at least what's gonna be in front of town meeting for that. I mean, it's, yeah.
We've, we've been redesigning this all evening. And I personally don't understand that the, I don't know what the board wants at this point.
I'll, I'll speak for myself, because I think the, um, first of all, nobody has said this this evening, but one of the points would be that to, well, there was a little bit of reference, to create a good, strong, comfortable pedestrian environment, we really do need to keep these openings down. It just, it feels, you feel much more exposed every time as a pedestrian you cross one of these openings. So, there's that, and I hope somehow that gets mentioned in the presentation. So, the other point would be that the, um, parking, especially in the denser parts of town, um, the parking on the street is extremely valuable, and the wider the flares, if that's the word we, we used to use anyway, um, the wider the flares, the more it impacts the parking. Um, so I do think that keeping these tight is desirable, and I personally think 20 feet max is the main point. What happens to me at the street is the most important issue, although, uh, to follow up with what Heather Hanan said, I also think that we don't want the, I would try to pull, um, I would guess I'd go for the two maximum dimensions, because the maximum opening at the property line will, um, have an additional effect of where the, where the sidewalk hits, and making sure that that's very clear, that there's a maximum on that dimension, too.
Yeah, I, I personally think that there, you know, I agree with Maureen, that this should be, you know, there's a maximum or a minimum of 10 and a maximum of 20 at the property line. So there's the sidewalk here, so that's fine. This is 20. And that whatever, and then we should have a max opening at the curb line based upon, it would be the distance from here to here, the actual curb cut. Chris is saying you should have some more play there, but we still want, like Maureen said, we still want a max opening dimension.
Yeah.
That, you know, the idea of maybe it's, whatever, 20 and 24, 20 and 22? 20 and 20, whatever it might be. If it's 20 and 20, these would obviously, this would go, completely go in. So the curbing would actually go, it would, it would be like this. This would be shifted over, because from here to here would have to be 20. So the only way for that to happen would be to squeeze these, squeeze these curb, um, corners in. So we could do that.
So I, I would just say, change the dimension to be where the joints are before the radius occurs. Change the two feet, right, the max. Let's go with what Boston's doing. The maximum of the two foot radius, okay? Change the 20 foot maximum opening to 22, and do it at the, where the joint starts for the granite curving to begin. So where the curb line is, right there to the other one, and say 22 foot max, and 10 foot minimum.
I, I think...
That would be 24 though, right, Heather? Two plus 20 plus two?
No, because it's not a full 90 degrees.
Yeah.
It's not two feet wide at the street.
Chris, you didn't, you didn't have it to measure this.
Uh, I, I think they are a true 24 inches, but I'll go check.
If they're 24 inches, then it's, then it's 24. And then that's, we just measure that dimension and we call it a...
I'll be right back.
While you do that, though, I am gonna talk to them about the 12 foot. Uh, what do, what does the board think about the 12 feet going from 10 to 12?
I think that we should do that with a special permit.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen very much.
If there is, if they are on a busy street, and it's a, it's a safety issue, then I think they should, they should have to ask for it.
I agree.
Okay, and then, um, Brian and I had asked about the May 1st, 2014. He said we could strike that?
Okay.
Because that was one that, we could strike it or we could just leave it?
I think it's confusing.
I mean, because everything's grandfathered in, so when the zoning changes, it becomes grandfathered. So, it's just for new. So I think, strike off section five, right, Brian? He said, strike it.
Well, you could do that, or you could do the date of, of this town meeting.
I think you just strike it, because everyone knows about grandfathering.
Yeah, I think it makes it less, I think it, it reduces confusion.
I will, I will let him, let town council know that's what the board thinks, but I think it was, I don't, I don't think they had a preference act, actually. I think he said it was like, we'll talk about that later kind of thing. So maybe they'll make a call, but I will certainly let them know that, um, yeah, I'll let them know.
Was that Art or Mina?
Mina, Mina, Mina does town meeting, uh, more so than Art.
So, I, I would like us to try to come up with a way of ensuring that that, that bizarre looking structure that Chris's picture of, I've forgotten what we've all called, the descending curb or whatever, cannot happen. And I think that implies that, that line that we're calling the driveway apron also has to have a ma, that has to match something. I'm just really worried they're gonna, you end up at the slope where the sidewalk comes down to meet the driveway apron, and it shouldn't. It should come to the driveway apron and then slope.
I don't know if we're gonna solve this this evening.
Yeah, I don't either.
24 inches on...
We don't want, but can we say what we do want?
I, I think that, what, what, um, what the chair was saying about in terms of taking the, the words out that were confusing, having a 20 foot max opening at the property line, and then a 20 foot max, or sorry, 24 foot max opening at the curb line based upon this three foot radius. There's really two options we have of whether we're gonna squeeze these in, sorry, two foot radius. Whether we're gonna squeeze these in, and this is gonna be 20, or whether we're gonna do exactly what we're doing here, except this will say 24.
Well, I think that if we're gonna do two foot radius, and based on the numbers that Chris gave us for his cord, he's only got a 26 degree section of that circle. So you only get two feet if you do 90 degrees. So, I don't think we give him two feet on either side of the max of that 20 feet. I think we give him one foot.
I agree with you, Diab.
Maybe 45 degree, maybe this is, you're, you're saying rather than a full 90.
But Chris's cord gives me 26 degrees.
Because he must have a three foot radius circle, like the whole circle.
Well, he claimed that he had a two foot radius, and the, the cord he gave me, which was 33 and a half, and I just, you know, said, "Fine, that's close enough to the..." I just did a fraction of a full circumference based on 33 and a half, and it comes out to approximately 26 degrees.
Well, in other, if I can just clarify, Diab, so when I say two feet, I, I'll, um, I'm saying if I measure from the, let's say, the face of that cornerstone where it meets the curb, if, come, yeah, right there, if you measure from that, and then come right down the street, keep coming, boom, 24 inches. That's, that is, that is 24, that's what I call, that's what I call a 24 inch radius, because it, it appears that four of those makes a circle. I mean, there, there's, this is still masonry, right? So they're also joints that come into play, like you allow for a nominal joint, like, just like you do for brick. Heather, so, you know, it's not, it's not literally quarters of a circle, because you're allowing for maybe as much as three quarters, or maybe even an inch for a masonry joint when we talk about paving. I don't know, but it's big.
Okay, so you are getting a full 45 degrees then? Or I'm sorry, a full 90 degrees? And so it is...
So it would be 24.
Okay, so it would be 24, and I think that's a bit large to my liking.
Especially if you're starting from 20 feet.
I agree. It's, it's really big. Um, I keep going back to the dimension of my road, uh, which has two-way traffic. It's 18 feet. This is big for a driveway.
Yeah, I'd say we simplify and just say 20 feet at the street.
I agree.
I agree.
Which is what the wording says above.
Right.
Which is what the wording says.
Right, the, the only thing that would need to be changed then is this, uh, these would just be, um, Brian would, would squeeze those, those curb corners in, and the 20 foot max would be at the curb line.
Yep.
And the granite, the word granite needs to be taken out.
Well, you know, amongst all the other edits, um, but really, it's what we intended. 20 feet at the, 20 feet max at the property, and an actual 20 foot curb cut.
Yes, yep.
I, I, I think we just need, we don't need to change any wording. I think, um, I'll just speak for Brian and say that he could do, he could do this in less than a week. Um, the, yeah, um, and that we make those changes. I don't, I don't think any votes need to happen. I don't think anything, uh, actually, that's not true. We would, we do need to vote to put this on the warrant, if these are all the changes, and we're ready for that. But there's no change to, there's no changes to this wording. So, I, I, I think this graphic is kind of a detail, but we would have to, uh, uh, I mean, a minor detail, but we could ask, we could definitely vote to put the wording on the warrant, for sure.
Can you also, um, legal did say he recommends striking number five. They're grandfathered in. He did say in his email, "I recommend..."
Okay, well then that makes it easier.
I recommend taking it out. That's his exact wording.
Okay, um, well, we will certainly make that into the final language as well.
And then we also...
Can you clarify that, Heather? What, what did legal counsel recommend to take out?
Recommend taking out number five of this section, striking it, which is, "This section shall apply only to entrances and exit driveways installed or widened at the street property line, edge of pavement or curb line after May 1st, 2017." Everyone gets grandfathered in, because it's a zoning. We don't need to actually state that.
The, just as a very quick thing, this was added in during town meeting? Someone brought it up.
Someone did understand grandfathering.
And someone was like, "Fine, well, okay, sure," and then it got voted, someone made a motion, someone voted on it, um, so...
Well, let's go and try to clean that up.
Um, and I think we should add the minimum dimensions as well, so it's not just the max. The 20 on those graphics, add the 10 minute, 10 foot minimums.
Correct.
The word granite. Keep the maximum three foot radius, but they still have to come in within that 20 foot dimension. Yes, Sally?
I want to, um, Heather, say that the, the photograph from Pond Street that Chris showed with what we've been calling the descending sidewalk, um, I agree that it is dangerous to pedestrians, um, and also unsightly. And I don't think that our, um, language takes care of that, but I don't think that we should try to take care of it, um, in a mad dash. It seems like a really complicated thing to describe to prohibit.
Yeah, we can't do it at this time to get it before town meeting.
Right, but I just wanted to, to, um, reinforce what Chris had showed that, and I think Maureen commented too, that it's not very attractive, and it's dangerous.
Yep. Um, so, on the to-do list, sound good? And, um, Chris, um, uh, because you were helping us do your measurements. Um, we did talk very briefly about the, um, going from 10 feet to 12 feet for the, and because there's a special permit to allow it, they, there's, and that's still opportunity there, is that that's what the board would prefer, is that if they want to go for the wider, to make it, they can, they have a special permit. I actually think it would be beneficial... Yeah, so it's number four. "The Board of Appeals Make Grant Relief From The Acquirements Of Subsection 1.3 Above By Special Permit Under Section 9.4." So it's number four. It's just at the end in the section, so they can apply for a special permit on the driveway to expand that. And that would be a good thing, because it needs to be reviewed, too, for how much impervious they're adding and stuff to do that. So it's not a bad thing to have to come back before, just for a special permit quick review.
I appreciate that, Heather. Um, I think, you know, my only concern would be for folk, so like, I, I actually, like, did this, right? So I had to actually do my engineering drawings... Like, did this, right, so I had to actually do my engineering drawings, had to do the street opening permit, you know, I draw everything before I build anything, and it was. It, there was some complexity to it, and I wonder about those homeowners who might not realize until it's built, that they have a problem. Um, but, you know, that's on them, and there is a process, and, you know, Maureen has ably talked at town meetings. Passed about the special permit process on a whole host of issues, so there's no doubt the process is there. Um, I just wanted to raise it with you guys tonight and ask you to consider it, I get it, and I also, I wanna second what Maureen said, the. If we call it the descending curb, I think it is hideous, it introduces so much impervious surface, and you know, was only what, one or. Three or four town meetings ago, we talked about the MS four, uh, costs and trying to minimize, you know. Um, influx into our storm sewers, and so it just seems baffling to me that we even allow that, because with that comes just more concrete, so. If that's something that the planning board is willing to take a closer look at in another meeting for another town meeting, I think, um, we'd be well-served.
Um, add a question to the planning board, though, because we're measuring and the radiuses, and we do wanna encourage the curb corners for. The two, the duplexes and the triplexes, I I actually think it might be beneficial at this point to increase that to twelve feet. Because we want to encourage those curb, those curvings to be used.
Right, 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 I'm not sure that we do, um, if, I'm, uh, if. If everyone gets a ten-foot and they need a twelve-foot, they can ask for the twelve-foot, but why, I still don't, why. Why did duplexes need wider than just a single unit?
Because they're, um, so the reason you do, when you have them, when you have the two. Driveways coming in together, right, on a, if you have two entrances, like Chris had mentioned he has on his, you usually typically do not enter those straight on. Those are angled at a different angle, so they're easier to get into, right, because you're coming around in an arch. As when you're doing duplexes and triplexes, you're turning into a ninety-degree angle, and to get that ninety-degree angle at a ten-foot. Um, and if you add those, and you're saying your ten-foot is the maximum, and you're adding curbs, you're bringing that down to six feet, you can't do it.
I I'm still not seeing it, because I'm thinking of all the duplexes in my neighborhood, and the way you enter those. Driveways is no different from going into a single unit, so I I just don't see how the geometry, how, there's nothing. I don't see that need, if someone could provide me a diagram, I just.
I think, uh, uh, Dea, it really depends on the size of the vehicle more than anything, um, and how tightly it can make the radius. But I would say this, um, that when we're talking about the duplexes, it's, the reality is, we could all bring up a zoning map. And I can have it, I have it pretty well in my head, and when you know the neighborhood with the duplexes. Um, that's where the pedestrian environment is incredibly important, so it's really a matter of what gets weighted here. The ease of the larger vehicle that can't make the tight turning radius, which I understand it does swing out, but it's, um. The da- what should I say, the danger or dis- uh, danger or called discomfort to the pedestrian on that sidewalk. I just have to prioritize, I want those kids and the elderly, um, there's a lot being said right now in the, um, planning world about, um. Pedestrian safety for the elderly and making this a, I think it was, and actually also MAPC was, uh, highlighting, um, how the elderly. Experience our streets, and I just have to feel that the pedestrian setting is the most important, and, um, those who can't make the tight. Radius, I understand, they're gonna swing out, but for the hazard, the, um, uh, uh, it just is much greater hazard. To have a whole lot of wide curb cuts.
Okay, so, but the dimension that we are taking on this is from the, where the curb joint is. So if you say that it can't be bigger than ten feet without a special permit, and you have a street with granite curbs with radiuses. They can't get those radiuses and and get their driveway, and you can't get a car through that dimension.
Then they can ask for a special permit, it's not like we have tons of new two families, I wish we did, but.
But isn't the goal of the planning board to go into accessory dwelling units and different, so I would think that right now, you would wanna make. The law be follow that those driveways are usable.
But, but.
Ten foot at the curb cut, that you're saying ten curb, you're not saying twenty feet, you're saying maximum ten feet. So take that dimension with a two-foot radius granite curving, and you are now down to six feet. You cannot, car is not even six feet wide, they're wider than that, so the dimension you're bringing it down to is not a usable driveway, period.
But you don't have to put the the granite curbing in if you don't want to, you can actually do a flare in concrete, which doesn't need the full. I mean, I I'm, I'm like, I'm, I'm sitting in a neighborhood of single-family homes, none of them has a twenty-foot wide driveway. They're all, I bet they're less than ten feet wide, they're probably, I I could run outside and measure it. But this is, I don't, and it's, so I don't really understand why we need to have such a wide entrance. A ten-foot wide entrance, you know, we talk about ten feet in terms of opening doors of cars. So that you don't hit anything, and that's, I believe, why when you go to a parking lot, there's a ten-foot wide parking spot. But I I'm still don't understand why you need to have such a wide entrance. I mean, I think we need to see, if we're gonna do this properly, we're gonna have to see, you know, one of those drawings where they put turn radiuses on. For various vehicles, so we can understand what the actual physical limitations are, so that we can, instead of guessing it. Whether ten feet is enough, or twelve feet is enough, we actually put an SUV down and say, what's the nominal turning radius of an SUV? How much does it actually need, how far away into the road does it have to start turning? So that we don't have it crossing over into the oncoming traffic.
That's the point, because we went through this when, um, Washington Street was rebuilt, there was all this re, there were actual takings of land. Um, at the corner of Washington at, um, Swanton, and they did that to, for, so the trucks, and it was all designed for the trucks. To get around those ra- uh, the ra- these radii, well, guess what, now we are in a different age, and that was whatever, my famous twenty. Twenty, twenty-one years ago, but we're trying to tighten the radius, and so, yes, occasion, on some occasions, this vehicle will swing out. But the, it's a trade-off, there's no question, it's a trade-off in road design, it's it's a trade-off, because what's safest? For the pedestrian's going to keep the tighter opening, and what, if you put the vehicle into the equation, then the argument will be, yeah, but. I have to keep it, uh, uh, whatever, a bigger radius, uh, radius for the swinging of the wide, the big vehicle. So it's, it's, they're not going to end up at the same place, but I.
Well, I I I agree with you, Maureen, I just think that ten feet should be sufficient, I mean.
I agree with you, yeah.
But I don't have any, I don't have any numbers to say that, and so that's all I'm saying, is that without any actual numbers. We cannot say that ten feet is is acceptable for all vehicles.
It's not.
I don't know if it is or it isn't.
No, it's not, my, my truck couldn't fit in it, so, if you look at the drawing that's on the screen right now, and you see the twenty, right? We have now changed that dimension to include the radiuses of the curbs, right, so where we're going from the joint to the other joint. So, pretty much, what the board is saying is that you do not want residents putting in curbing. That will do a radius or anything if you are in a duplex or a triplex, because what will happen is if you put the two-foot radius on either side. You have a ten-foot maximum, you're losing four feet, you're at six feet, my truck cannot make it into that driveway, period. So if I want to put, and I mean, truck, SUV, whatever you want, will not fit on that driveway. To get through the driveway apron.
Wait, wait a second, though, I mean, I think there's a, there's a little confusion, or or the the key is, though, Heather, is that you don't have. You essentially have a parking pad in front of your house, so you are different than. A, a, a duplex where your garage or whatever it is, is further back from the street. So the reason you can't get your big car into there is because there's already another vehicle. Blocking your ability to move in, because your cars are so close to the street, if that other car were eight feet back. Then I would imagine twenty feet would be sufficient for you to get your, pardon?
We're talking about ten feet width, we're only talking about duplex.
I thought we were still talking about twenty.
No, no, I'm talking about the ten-foot issue with the duplexes and triplexes, no, I agree with the board on the twenty. It's when you get to the duplexes and triplexes, when you have that dimension is now ten feet, right? And it's supposed to be a ten-foot, but then you go, okay, so it's ten foot, including the curbs. Then you do the radius of those curbs, we know they're two feet, because Chris went and measured it, which is four feet, you're getting down to a six-foot wide area to turn into. Now, that's way too small.
Then you just don't put in a curb, I guess.
That's what I'm saying, is the board is encouraging that you, we don't do curbs. In these situations for duplexes and triplex, I think that's incorrect, I think the dimension should be twelve feet. But, the same time, we are, we're running really overly on time, there's a few things we have to get going on, so I wanna, I. If the board disagrees with me, I don't wanna keep going, and it's fine, and, um, I've kinda, it's. We are, where we are, where we are.
So, this is only about new construction, and. I think, if it's going to two ten-foot openings. Supposed to a single larger opening that goes to, say, to a a shared garage in the back, I'm just trying to think of what's going on with these duplexes. Plus, they, if it's new construction, they can come in for a special permit anyway, so I I actually think that that's the argument.
Ryan, can I share my screen?
Yep, hold on a sec.
Holy cow, we still have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I I didn't even see the time, wow.
Um, all right, Cheryl, you should be able to share.
Okay. So I just redrew this, I don't know if this is helpful. But I think this is what we were talking about, is a maximum opening at the curb line, as well as maximum pop- property line. And if we wanted to do a ten-foot minimum, it would require a fourteen-foot max at the curb. Based on a two-foot radius.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
That way we get curbs, and we get the safety of having the curbs as you're walking down the sidewalk, right? I mean, that's the whole point of bringing this in, and it it makes a lot of sense.
Well, how do we prevent them from taking that fourteen foot and extending it all the way to the property line?
Because it says ten-foot opening at property line, max opening at property line.
Sure, and then they can take ten feet and they can angle it out, so you can actually go from ten feet to fourteen feet. So instead of having a straight line.
Yeah, because this is actually, I'm, I drew this the wrong way, so it's really, now we're down to here. Sorry.
Yeah, the ten feet is from the the interior red line, yep, there you go.
Exactly.
All right, so you could actually start at that point and go straight out to the fourteen feet.
You could say, yeah, that you're gonna do this, right?
Yeah, and that's what I would like to avoid.
Okay.
I mean, I I I think if we, if we.
I think it's fourteen feet max at curb with, if using two-foot radius curving.
But remember, this is also gonna be a ten-foot max driveway, so it's, this isn't. I mean, we we'd prefer to have the radius curbs, they slow people down, but. This is. Okay.
Can I say something, if if, um, if you say ten-foot max all the way to th- this. Um, to the beginning of the curb, instead of ten-foot max at the property, because your your concern is about safety. At, um, the sidewalk, so if you say ten-foot max all the way to the beginning of the curb. Or the the radius, or the the start of the curb cut, I mean, wouldn't that solve it?
Yes.
Could you, could you flip it around and say that the sidewalk, the break in the sidewalk can maybe no more than ten feet?
Well, that's the, that is, so the ten-foot max at the property line is, that's what, that's what, that's the sidewalk, are you talking, which which edge of the sidewalk? At the property line, or you're talking about?
Well, the the sidewalk is actually outside of the property line, isn't it?
I just didn't know whi- which edge of the sidewalk you were talking about.
Well, any edge of the sidewalk, say that the the maximum break in the sidewalk for, that a vehicle, for a vehicle to pass. Can only be ten feet.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is right now, that that that's exactly what it is right now on the book.
Right. Am I drawing everything, yeah?
Yep, that, and tha- that's what we have written right, right now, in terms of the, the, um, like. Oh, yeah, you're sharing your screen, so I can't put it on, but, um, okay, well, I'll just let you finish there.
I'm, I'm fine, okay, stop sharing, sorry.
No, no, this is good, um, well, I just, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know, well. Yeah, I should, why don't you continue, actually?
It doesn't actually say that the width of this, how much of the sidewalk can be disrupted, all it says is that. The width of each entrance at the street line, that's the existing language, is no more than ten feet. And then we adding ten feet at the curb line or edge of pavement, so all you're saying is that, at the edge of the property line is a ten feet. At the edge of the street is ten feet, or or now we could extend it to fourteen to put the curbs in, but you're not saying anything about. How the effect on the intermediate sidewalk, and I think, I think it was Yicheng who talked about. Specifying the ten feet all the way to where the curbing starts, but. I'm wondering if we could just simplify the, what we really wanna do is protect the sidewalk, so instead of worrying about where the curbing starts or anything like that. We just say, we wanna protect the sidewalk, so let's just maintain a maximum amount of area that the sidewalk can be disrupted.
I would like to say this isn't ready for prime time.
I didn't wanna say, I, yeah, I didn't wanna say it either, but like, there's, there's no chance, there's no chance, the way.
This is gonna get worked out for this town meeting, we can't work it out now, it's not gonna get into warrant article book, uh, this Friday, I think we just keep working on it. And come back to it.
Well, can we agree on the twenty feet?
This one?
Instead of just say that we can't agree on what happens with the ten feet, we do agree with what happens to the twenty feet.
Well, the the big issue of why it's really important for the planning board is people are bringing in these huge radiuses, right? So we're trying to deal with how to address the radius, and so that we don't end up with six-foot huge ginormous radius going on.
Right.
We haven't dealt with it through all the issues, we have issues with the single, with the smaller, it's not that, it's, we haven't resolved it. I don't think we're gonna be able to get through it tonight, it's already two minutes to our end time.
Hey, Heather, I'd rather just pass on dealing with the ten-foot piece and going forward with the other. Because you're right, that's a bigger, those are big cuts, so could we go back to just pressing ahead with the twenty-foot openings?
I would be comfortable with that.
I think we're going to close on something.
All right, all right, so, okay, well, I think we have enough information to move forward with everything related to the twenties. And basically leave the, leave the ten, leave everything related to ten feet.
As is.
As is?
Yeah, because if we're saying the curb line and the images are showing it, the curb line is actually where the curb breaks for the radius. We're making it the ten feet unbuildable, like functional, buildable.
Um, all right, well, we can certainly move forward with the twenties, that's what everyone is comfortable with, and Brian and I can work on that. To to submit, um, because there doesn't seem to be any issue on the twenty.
No, there's plenty of room in there, it's the ten that there is.
Right, right.
Well, I, do we do, do we need a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a motion to put whatever it is, uh, on the warrant.
I move that we put the. The, um, alteration of the modifications to section five, one-ten of the zoning bylaws. Which pertain to the twenty-foot openings on the town warrant. As discussed. as discussed.
So there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So I'm supposed to read this as part of our hearing procedure. So as set forth in Master General Lodge, Chapter forty A, Section Five, Adoption or Change of Zoning Ordinances or Bylaws, no zoning ordinance or bylaw or amendment thereto shall be adopted until after the planning board in a city or town, and the city council or a committee designated or appointed to the purpose by said council has each held a public hearing thereon, together or separately, at which interested person shall be given an opportunity to be heard. Three members of the board present constitute a majority of the board. The affirmative vote of three members is required to place the article on the town meeting warrant. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes five oh. We'll place it on the warrant for town meeting. Um, so that ends, um, we have a motion to end our hearing. Do we need to end it, or is it the vote ends it?
I think you just close it.
I think, but just so you know, our procedures do not define how we close it, so just, um, so I will be closing the hearing. I thank you, Chris and Sally and Yiching for your comments and for your contributions in that discussion.
Sorry, I contributed to such a lengthy meeting.
No, it's all right. It's gotta go out with the, gotta go out with the, you know.
Sorry, Heather. Thank, thank you for everyone's attention and patience on this issue. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So let's move real quickly to approve meeting minutes, because we have to do this. Um, we have to do both things. So let's try to move through. I did review the meeting minutes. Um, I had one edit. Um, other members, let me get them out, but other members of the board, did you have edits?
Uh, this is Deb. I did not.
Um, it's Maureen. I I guess I wouldn't call it an edit or correction, but we'll get there. I guess if you just call up the dates, or I guess it'd be nice to bundle them, the vote.
Fine bundling. Um, my edit was just for March fourth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, page three. Um, my comment, um, one, two, three, four, five. The fifth comment from the bottom, it says Chair Von Mering for item number eight. Um, like to add a specific condition for Vine and Elmwood Street Viewscapes of the HVAC. I just wanted to make sure that was clear in there.
Okay, of the HVAC, got it.
So that we asked, so that was that condition that I specifically asked for, it wasn't clear enough. Um, okay, that's all I really had.
Actually, my one was also on that. Um, so I guess that's the one that's gonna have a, uh, whatever corrections, but for the March fourth, page two, uh, let's see, the first comment from me, Maureen Meister, I just, when I spoke, I did say, um, if it went to, it says three, but actually I had said three and a half stories, it would still be very large. So I was commenting on three and a half, not three stories. So I did write that down as a correction. So otherwise, that's it. I think Nancy, once again, is really doing a wonderful job. So I'm going to start with, we've got one from twenty twenty, and I'm shuffling. You can probably hear me shuffling. Uh, let's see, where'd that go? January twenty eighth? No, we've got two from the twenty twenty. So let's do, that was first, because some people wouldn't be here, for example, Cheryl Wolf. So January twenty eighth, twenty twenty, and correct, uh, March tenth, twenty twenty. I'm going to recommend favorable action on both. And just a reminder to Heather that Cheryl was not a member of the board then.
Um, so it's a reminder to you, Cheryl, that you don't need.
Yeah.
Um, okay, all right, roll, is there a second?
Uh, just to point out that that according to the minutes on March tenth, twenty twenty, Heather Hanlon was not present either.
Right.
So we, I think, why don't, so we do January twenty eighth first, I guess.
All right, so we're gonna do it as two separate motions, Maureen?
Okay, I move to, um, I I recommend a favor, I, I'm sorry. I, uh, move to approve Janu, the January twenty eighth minutes, twenty twenty, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty minutes.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, HIJ, yeah.
Uh, Hanlon is is there.
Oh, but I wasn't there.
On the twenty eighth of January?
Oh, sorry, yes, I was.
So.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jerius, aye.
Um, Cheryl, are you abstaining?
I think these were ones I wasn't on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Meister, aye. Well, I made the motion.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes four oh one with Wolf abstaining. Moving on to March, March tenth, twenty twenty.
Twenty, 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 twenty. Um, I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Him are abstaining, correct?
Correct.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes three oh two with Hanlon and Wolf abstaining. Uh, moving onward, I think we can do all of them, but the one with the little edits.
Right, um, Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do you want all of them, Maureen, that are left, or do you want to do?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. March, um, Tuesday, March ninth, to approve those. Uh, let's see, Tuesday, March ninth, executives, twenty twenty-one executive session. Thursday, March fourth.
With edits.
Um, is that the one?
Yes.
Correct. Um, well, I'll just say that with that, March fourth with edit, um, as amended, and, um, Tuesday, March sixteenth, um, to approve.
And then there's also a Tuesday, March sixteenth, at nine, ten executive session.
Thought there was. I think I've lost it.
So there are, there are five total in there, Maureen's?
There used to be.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Of a lot of paper here.
I will second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes. Meeting minutes are approved as amended. Uh, five oh. All right, moving on, before we go into executive session, um, I don't, I don't think we have many people left from, actually, just a few, um, just two. Um, the, actually, the two people who are looking to run for the planning board. But before we go, I just, into executive session, I did want to say publicly, um, Maureen and Cheryl, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you on the planning board, and I thank you so much for your service. And it's, it's been, it's been really quite an experience. And Maureen, I know you've, you've been dedicating a long time of your, you had a lot of many hours of your life to the planning board and prior to that, to the store commission and many ventures and town government.
Design Review Committee, actually.
Yep, and the Design Review Committee.
Years on that, yeah.
So I, um, you know, and Cheryl, you also were on Design Review prior to sitting with us and helping us, um, fill the vacancy for the last year with, for Betsy Craigers seat. So thank you to both of you for your time and commitment to us.
It shouldn't even be spoken in the same breath as as Maureen. Maureen, you, you, you've take, you've done it.
Well, I, the one thing I do want to say is when I started, we had no planner, we had no money, truly no money. It was, you, it just, it's, we've come a long way. So if, we've got a lot of work to do, but the town of Winchester surely is much better served now than we were, um, twenty-one years ago. It it's just, it's night and day. So I wish the new board the best. Um, there is still work to be done.
There will always be work to be done.
Yeah, so I want to chime in really quickly, um, to all the members of the board who are potentially leaving us. It has been a real, um, it's been a, it's been a really educational and interesting and fulfilling experience working with you all. Um, Maureen, you have an incredible depth of knowledge about things, which I think will sorely be missed from the board. Um, you just, there is, there is just such a wealth that you have that you've given to the board. Um, it's pretty remarkable, and, uh, I think that we, it will take a while until we come up to speed on a lot of things like that. Um, and, uh, Heather, it's been great working with you for the last few years. I presume you will be moving on to town moderator. Um, and Cheryl, it's been good having you around for the last few months. It's been, it's been great having you. So thank you all.
Uh, someone last week told me, not last week, but yesterday, is like, people in public service are pretty much consenting to learn in public. As we go, we make mistakes, and we are making mistakes in front of others, and that we are consenting to learn and to do that in front of others and for others to watch us. And it's, um, it really has been quite a, a journey, and, um, it's been really, it's been really great working with you. And I feel like our board is very open and communicative. We have a good discussions, as we saw today. We dig in deep and keep going. Um, but we have always been, um, I've always, in the time that I've been on the planning board, it's always just been really a wonderful group of people to work with, and it's never fighting or, you know, finger pointing or blaming. It's always just been kind of trying to figure it out, work it out. And we disagree on things, but we always come back and just keep working and trucking through things. And also, Brian, you know, you know where you are, so, and all that. So, um, anyway, just, it's been really, it's been a great experience. So.
Thank you, Heather.
Um, does anyone else want to say anything before I move on? Um, so with that, to the members of the public who are joining us, we will be moving into executive session to employee evaluation to discuss the reputation, character, professional competence of the town planner. Um, we will not be entertaining any other discussion thereafter, so you don't need to stick around and wait for us to come back. We will not be discussing anything thereafter as a planning board, um, outside of that executive session. Um, to move into executive session, we need to have a motion, and it needs to be a roll call vote.
I move that we move into exec, we start, begin executive session for all of the reasons Heather just listed.
Is there a second?
Okay.
And roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Oh, sorry, jumped the gun. Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mering, aye. The planning board is going to move into executive session. Thank you to everyone from the public who joined us. Um, and also to all of our staff that's been supporting us through this evening, and also, as always, Nancy, our recording secretary, and Win Cam. Thank you for your time, and we will be going to executive session, and thereafter will be immediately adjourning our meeting. So thank you. And good night.